The opportunity to be in person, to really celebrate with some music and some fanfare. As we kick off this campaign season going into the 2021 election. And for the candidates that at the end of the year to be able to actually be a council member and help lead the city in a new direction. So we're really excited to have folks today and I'm excited to announce our slate of candidates to you tonight and give each of them a couple of minutes to share their story, who they are, why they're running, and why they are going to be one of the best choices for city council going into next year. So we were hoping to have our city chairman with us. He looks like he's a bit delayed, so I'm going to kick it off and introduce a few folks along the way. For our reporters as well, we'll be sending some bio information right after this virtual press conference tonight so that you have all of the information about our candidates on top of the things that they're going to talk about this evening. Just in terms of an order of how this is running, we're going to go through and introduce and talk to our ward candidates first, then we'll talk to our at-large candidates. We'll have some introductions for our county legislator candidates as well. And we love them just as much as our council members, but they get to shine in their own little spotlight. And then at the end, I'll moderate questions with any news media that wants to ask questions of our candidates. So with that, we will get started and I am pleased first off to announce some of the candidates. Unfortunately, one who was going to be up first couldn't make it today due to a death in the family, but we are excited to announce that for Ward Three, Vicki James, who has been with us for quite a long time and has helped lead the city in the Housing Committee and with initiatives across Ward Three for many years. We're excited to announce that she will be running again for this election season. So we're excited to have her. And again, apologize, she isn't able to join with us tonight, but we do want you to know that she's ready and roaring to go into this candidacy season. But I do want to introduce our first person who is definitely not a stranger because she has led the city council for many years, formerly as president, as well as the Ward Four Council Member for many years, has served on boards across the community and really helped to shape the future of Jamestown. So I'd like to introduce our candidate, our incumbent, running for Ward Four, Marie Caruba. So I'm just going to spotlight her here and have her start. Marie, don't forget to unmute yourself.
I think, am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay. Thank you for the introduction, Mayor Sunquist. As you know, I was appointed to fill a vacancy in 2013 and have run for election and reelection ever since. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve on the city council. I feel like I've been able to kind of tie in many of the boards that I've served in with my time on city council. I've chaired and served as president of both the Resource Center Board and Chautauqua Opportunities. I've had experience as treasurer of the Resource Center and been on their finance committee for over 20 years. And I'm currently president of Chautauqua Opportunities. I serve on the Board of Public Utilities and a myriad of other committees that I chair, the Community Services Board, as well as the Workforce Investment Board. But all of these have in common is we're all looking to provide better services for community members and a better quality of life. And that includes everything from housing to infrastructure and everything in between. I've been very pleased to have the pleasure of working with the past mayor and the current mayor with our parks because I'm delighted to hear that they're reopening. I know it was a concern of mine last year and I'm delighted to know that they will be available. We have a great park system and most families are looking for outside entertainment, especially during the COVID. And it's a great pleasure to know that they'll be able to utilize the many parks that we have, including Bergman Park, which is in Ward Four, which hosts a number of events for the community. I'm very pleased that I have served on the Housing Committee and have had some opportunities to help people who want to become homeowners. I'm also on the Jamestown Renaissance Corporation, looking at how we can improve neighborhoods, what we can do to improve the quality of our housing. And also working along with the County Land Bank to take vacant and abandoned properties and try to revitalize and restore them and bring them back onto the tax rolls. And that's a huge effort. We have a lot of homes that just are not redeemable and the land bank has also helped the city in terms of demolition, which we all hate to see, but sometimes there are efforts that just can't be put into these homes to bring them back to a way in which someone can occupy them safely and at a cost that's affordable. During my time, unfortunately, I've had to see the beautiful Cathedral Oaks torn down, excuse me, torn down, cut down. And that's been a really heartbreaking event, but given the safety implications and the number of people that drive down Third Street, which is one of the gateways into the city, needed to be done. And I'm really looking forward to the efforts of the city and Dan Stone to replacing those trees and making it just as spectacular as it once was. The roads are a constant issue and I know we are always in need of repairs. And that's another that I've been happy to help my constituents to get road surfaces redone and to improve those because probably street fronts and, excuse me, home fronts and streetscapes and the city streets are probably the three biggest issues that I receive as a council member. So I'm going to continue my efforts. I'm going to continue to put all of my experience to work. I have served as a volunteer mediator and in many cases, when I get calls and concerns, I've referred people to mediate and have been very successful in resolving issues and trying to keep those issues from escalating and turning into events where the police might have to be called because neighbor-to-neighbor problems couldn't be resolved in a successful manner and in a safe manner. So that's primarily what I'm looking to work on and what I continue to hope to work with during my time on city council, as well as working with the Board of Public Utilities and continuing to see that we can maintain a very cost-effective electrical system along with our recycling programs and the water and sewer, which on this side of town, the west side, has had a number of issues with water runoff. But I'm delighted to say that all the things that have been done to ameliorate those problems, including a huge retention pond at the bottom of McDaniel Avenue, have been tremendous in resolving those water issues. So that's been probably a great accomplishment of getting that resolved for the neighborhoods. And, you know, just it's a great, I have to say, I love the fourth ward in the west side of town. It's a great place to live. I've been a homeowner here for almost 26 years. Next month, it will be 26 years. And I've lived in the city of Jamestown for 37 years and wouldn't want to live anywhere else. So that's about all I can say. I am married and I have two adult sons who are gainfully employed and I'm really proud of them because in this day and age, it's very, very encouraging that they're self-sufficient and I'm very proud of my kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Marie. We have our next candidate for Ward Five, who is a newcomer here. We'd like to introduce to you all Doug Lawson, who will be running in Ward Five.
Hello, everyone. My name is Douglas Lawson. I'm the Democratic candidate running for city council of Ward Five. I grew up in the city of Jamestown and graduated from Jamestown Community College, where I earned an associate's degree in computer science. I've worked in information technology for the past 11 years. Most of that time, I have been working with our local small businesses in the area to develop and maintain their growing IT infrastructure. I am looking forward to helping with the progression of Jamestown, both towards a more technology-based future and towards a more family and pet-friendly city. I welcome the opportunity to hear from my fellow residents of Jamestown and hope to help their voices and concerns be heard. I would like to thank everyone for this amazing opportunity to aid in the betterment of the city of Jamestown. And that's pretty much all I have. Up next is Thomas Nelson, the current councilman and candidate of Ward Six.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening. My name is Tom Nelson and it's been my honor to serve as the Ward Six Councilman for the past six years. Currently, I am the chairman of the Public Works Committee. I serve as the liaison to the Planning Commission and serve on the Jamestown Local Development Corporation. I was born in Jamestown. My wife Dee and I have lived in the city for the past 31 years and we have four adult children. I've been a teacher at Fruisberg Central School for the past 34 years. I've coached a number of sports, football, basketball, track, and I've been the mock trial advisor for the past 28 years. As a U.S. history and government teacher and participation in government teacher, I've always encouraged my students to get involved with their community, to try to work to solve problems. I think it's all about making your communities a little bit better and to give something back. And to me, holding a seat on the city council is all about community service. You know, you and I and everybody in Jamestown have chosen Jamestown as our home. And whether you were born here like me or just recently moved in, most of us want the same things. We want opportunities for ourselves and our children. We want safe neighborhoods. We want clean parks and recreation programs. We want the best-trained police and fire departments and emergency services. We want good roads and other quality public work programs. So my goal is to continue to serve the people of Ward Six and the entire city, to provide those things for our residents. So I respectfully ask for your vote this November. I'm looking forward to working with Mayor Sunquist and the rest of the council. So thank you. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Ellen DeTanto, who is a candidate for city council at large.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the introduction by Tom Nelson. Tom and Marie and certainly Vicki have been longtime members of the city council and they've done a lot of great work. So thank you very much. My name is Ellen DeTanto. I am a longtime resident of the city of Jamestown, born in Chautauqua County in the North County, but I've lived here for 40-plus years. I have been endorsed by the Democratic and the Working Families Parties to run for city council at large, and I felt compelled to run this time. I may be a newcomer on the ballot, but I've been involved in politics for a long time in Chautauqua County. I think that we have done a lot of great work in this county and in the city, but the city of Jamestown is at a very critical juncture right now. All of us know we've had some tough years in Jamestown. This pandemic relief funding that's going to be coming to the city of Jamestown gives us an opportunity to think outside of the box and to finally have a chance to do some things differently that will attract new homeowners, improve our neighborhoods, provide us with improved parks, and I think some other things that we can only dream about at this point. It's going to take us some time to do strategic planning and to come up with the best ways to spend that money, but I do hope that I can be part of that solution. My professional background is in business. I have a master's in business administration. I have had the opportunity to work at Jamestown Community College in two very different positions. The one I am in now is as Executive Director of the Faculty Student Association. That is a combination of very small businesses that are there to support students. And so it's been an area of transition as we've moved out of different types of retail, food service. I've done plenty of contract negotiations. I've looked at public partnerships and private partnerships with businesses, and I think I can bring that to the table for the city council as well. My interest, of course, is again, looking at contracts, budgets, public-private partnerships, and looking for new ways to make Jamestown the place where people want to live. I think it's very important for us to look at our neighborhoods. I think all of the candidates have mentioned that. There is probably not a single neighborhood in the city of Jamestown that couldn't use some revitalization. And while we have certain areas that have suffered greatly and need either rehabilitation or, as Marie said, some demolition, we also have commercial buildings that need to be looked at and can be looked at in terms of new opportunities. One of the things I think I bring to the city is a longtime membership as the city's zoning board member, both as a commission member and as the board chair for over 10 years. The city has to update its zoning code, and I think by sitting on the city council, I can help bring some expertise to that. Part of the use of the stimulus money is going to be, how do we do things differently? And if we update our zoning code, we may be able to take advantage of both properties that are in need of rehab or bringing new property values up so that we can get more tax benefit in the future. So I think that with all of those things, I would be an asset to the city of Jamestown. I'm looking forward to people from all parties asking questions and looking at this entire slate and looking at both the long-term experience and the new experience that we will bring to the city council. And hopefully that will be a good way for Mayor Sunquist to move forward with his goals and with the city council to come up with some good strategic planning for our long-term future. My job now is to introduce another candidate, a person who has selected Jamestown to live in, a young professional who has come to Chautauqua County to do work in the youth and recreation field at Chautauqua Institution, but she and her family have chosen Jamestown because she believes in the future of Jamestown. Her name is Alyssa Porter, and I'm very, very pleased to have her on the ballot with us, and I'd like to introduce you at this point, Alyssa.
Thank you, Ellen. I really appreciate your support and the support of the rest of our committee members. As Ellen mentioned, my name is Alyssa Porter. I am originally from, I am originally an Ohio native and currently serve as the Director of Youth and Family Programs for the Chautauqua Institution. When we moved to the area, I began the process of finding a new home and community for my family. Choosing Jamestown was easy. I believe in the promise and potential of our city. I saw a community that I wanted to be a part of, a city where I wanted to raise my child. Neighbors who care for each other, families coming together in parks, and a community of people actively working together to build thriving neighborhoods. These are the things that I think of when I think of Jamestown. I am running for city council because I want to take an active role in ushering in the city's future, a future that attracts and retains new residents like my family. This will not be an easy task, but focusing on a forward-thinking and solutions-oriented approach to local government, I believe that we can tackle the challenges facing our community, like the inadequate public transportation system, the opportunity to invest in housing initiatives, and the need to eliminate barriers that make it difficult to attract new businesses, especially those without the backing of wealthy investors. I grew up in a blue-collar family with parents who showed me what could be accomplished through hard work and a commitment to helping others. I was taught to listen to the people around me, work to understand and learn from our differences, and to be a strong advocate for all. These lessons have made seemingly impossible goals achievable. If Jamestown will have me as a member of city council, I will apply these principles tirelessly in my efforts to serve our community. At the end of the day, public office is about public service, and service means listening to the people that you represent. If we are to build a Jamestown for the future, it has to be constructed on a foundation that begins with community. Our strength as a city lies in our people. I am committed to listening to and serving all of our neighbors. I believe in our community. I believe in Jamestown. I hope to be sworn in as your newest city council member at the end of this run, and I am beyond excited to meet, learn from, and talk with more of our residents over the coming months. Now I would like to turn our attention to my fellow at-large candidate, Christina Cardinelli.
Don't forget to unmute, Christina.
Okay, we are all set now. I hope so, anyway. Hi there. Thank you so much for joining us. I'm so happy to see everyone on this call, a lot of familiar names, and thank you for being with us, and thank you to Mayor Eddie Sunquist for hosting this. I am very, very proud to be running with the candidates that we have heard from previously. They are all very impressive and very educated and very dedicated to serving the city of Jamestown. When I first initially ran for state assembly during the year of 2020, my entire goal was to change New York state laws for working people. And I am very committed to revisiting that on a smaller municipal level. I think that my efforts and my dedication to serving working families and working people can absolutely be concentrated on the city of Jamestown alone. And that is actually what I do in terms of a small business. I am a small business owner and I own my business on the sole intention of assisting other small businesses. The first thing that I will do when I sit down with a small business is say, what are your expenses? Let me see your budget. Let me see revenue. Let me see marketing, marketing efforts, if you have any. And we really work together to ensure productivity, and that is exactly what I want to bring to the city of Jamestown. I am very, I'm looking forward to the federal aid. I'm very encouraged that we are in fact getting federal aid. However, I don't believe that that is the end to every single issue that we will experience as a city. We have to be forward-thinking, what happens when that federal aid runs out? So I would love to have an active role in evaluating our budget and evaluating our expenses and expenditures and finding creative solutions in order to maintain productivity and hopefully surplus, that is what we go for. And secondly, when it comes to Jamestown City Council, any city council position, I feel like there is a little bit maybe of a misunderstanding or a misconception when it comes to your role in the city of Jamestown. When you are a city council member, you are the legislative body. You serve the people. You are a lawmaker, and that is a role that I take very seriously because when you listen to your constituents as a lawmaker and when you actively pursue different questions that they may have or different issues that they may have, and you work together to propose solutions, that is how you change quality of life. And that is what I aimed to do in my initial campaign, change quality of life, improve quality of life. And this will be my opportunity to truly concentrate on Jamestown and serve the constituents of Jamestown. So thank you so much for having me and thank you for listening. And now it is my great honor to introduce our city chair. Without a doubt, this person has helped me so much anytime that I have needed any resources or any phone calls that I needed to make or any information. I am constantly contacting him and he is very receptive and he's so helpful. So I would encourage everyone that is on this call, if you have questions about anything, anything election-wise, anything at all, he is a great asset to have. So I am going to introduce our chair, Norm Green.
And so we got Jim Walton there too, and Jim Walton, the city chair. Jim?
Hi, Norm. I was, sorry for being a little late. I was, I was, I've never zoomed from this particular computer before, and when I started it up, I had to load software, I had to go find another camera. It's just been, it's just been one of those Thursday afternoons. So we'll be happy to see the weekend coming. But I'm thrilled to be here, thrilled to be looking at the slate that we're looking at here in the city and in the county. And I think that we've got, we've got the makings of a very good year and that Team Eddie will be able to move forward and with some more help on the council, that we can move onto his agenda and get things done here.
So at the county level, we have four outstanding candidates we're running this year in the city of Jamestown, from the city of Jamestown for the county legislature. The first, I have bad news to tell anybody that doesn't know it, and that's Chuck Nizero, our leader of the Chautauqua County Legislature Minority, is not running for reelection. It's, I hope I'm not the one who's first delivered this news, but that's where we stand. And we have an outstanding candidate that we're putting forward to take his place, and that's Billy Torres. Most of all these people, it's, we're going to have a formal announcement in the coming week, and Billy Torres is a person who is Hispanic, and we're very excited. We're always looking for women, people of color, that's who the Democratic Party is, and we're looking for people that represent all facets of life in Chautauqua County to be our candidates, and we're pretty excited about that. That's in the south side of the city of Jamestown. North side, we have Heather Fagan, she'll be running for election. Again, we'll be doing formal announcements shortly. She's Director of Marketing at Hope's Windows. In the, in the west side of the city of Jamestown, Bob Whitney will be running for reelection. Of course, he's an electrician and a good union man and somebody that served the area well. And then Paul Whitford also will be running in LD 13 in the east side of the city of Jamestown, another great union leader. And this is who we are. We're people from all facets of life. We represent the working families of our community, and it's easy for us all to coalesce together, coalesce together, because people say to me all the time, well, you know, what exactly is the Democratic Party? What do you stand for? You know, and we stand for making government work. And the city council people that we have running today are going to, the incumbents and the challengers are going to be there to make government work, as well as the county legislature. Back to, this is a great forum, and we appreciate the city chair, Jim Walton, and our mayor, Eddie Sunquist, and back to Eddie.
Thanks so much, Chairman Green and Chairman Walton. We're trying to, trying to figure out Zoom as we do this along the way, right? So I really appreciate it. I want to thank all of our candidates for coming tonight and for speaking, and we will be opening up to questions. Before we begin, I just want all of our candidates and all of the media to know that we've put a lot of work and effort into preparing these candidates to start to run. We've spent hours on Zoom calls, crafting a plan, and really preparing each of these candidates to create their committees, to start to fundraise, to start to knock on doors, to start to see people. And we know this is difficult, especially during a pandemic, but I have seen such an incredible group of people come together so quickly and to really focus on doing what's right for the city of Jamestown. And I am thrilled beyond belief at the folks that we have that are running this year for city council and for our county legislative candidates, as Chairman Green had mentioned. So at this point, we want to open it up to any questions that the media may have. I'll help moderate that with the rest of our candidates. So if we have any media folks that want to ask a question, feel free to unmute yourself and you can go ahead and start asking a question.
Yes, Matt Hummel at WNY News Now. My question is for Christina Cardinelli. What kind of lessons can you take from your run for state assembly into your candidacy this year?
Hi, it's nice to talk to you again. I haven't seen you for a while. I hope you're doing well. Really, when you look at the legislative body for New York State Assembly versus the executive branch and the checks and balances, this is kind of what I'm referring to when I say that there is a misconception or a misunderstanding. For New York State Assembly, you have your executive branch, which is the governor, and he is surrounded by the legislative and he is surrounded by the legislative body, and that is essentially the checks and balances of the system, and they put forth legislation to change quality of life, hopefully. And really, Jamestown, the municipality, is a smaller-scale-down version of that, just in comparison on a federal level. Your executive is the president, and he's surrounded by his legislative body. So when I say there is a misunderstanding, and I say that maybe there's, you know, there needs to be a little bit more of a clarification there, I want to take all of those lessons that I learned at a state level and bring them down and very concisely apply the principles of being a lawmaker for the city of Jamestown. When I was addressing issues for the county, so many of the issues for Chautauqua County are so relevant in the city of Jamestown. When you talk to people all over the county, all the constituents that have concerns, their concerns are Jamestown's concerns very much. We want to talk about public transportation. We want to talk about infrastructure. We want to talk about revitalization without gentrifying. Everything that we talked about and the issues that working people are facing, especially right now during the pandemic, on a county scale in Chautauqua County, there are so many similarities with the city of Jamestown specifically. When I was running during the State Assembly campaign, I was thrilled to be there, and I was so invigorated, and I was so excited. There was always like this little voice in the back of my head that said, what are you doing for the city of Jamestown? This is your home. This is where you're from. This is where you have spent your entire life. And if you are running for State Assembly, how much of that effort can be specific to your home, to the city of Jamestown, to the people that you went to school with and their parents and all of the families that I know? And although I was not able to move on to State Assembly, now I get to answer that little voice that I've always had that was always constantly bringing up of Jamestown? What are you doing for Jamestown? How are you helping the families of Jamestown? And I am so grateful for the opportunity that now I get to show you what I can do for the city of Jamestown. So thank you so much for your question.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have any other media folks?
Yeah. Dave O'Connor. Eddie, how are you?
I'm doing fine, Dave. Good to hear from you.
I messed up. Christina kindly sent me a link to this meeting, which I promptly kerfuffled, and I had to, about 10 minutes into the meeting, she was kind enough to answer my plea to resend me the meeting number. So I missed the first 10 minutes. So I would like to, am I correct in thinking that Tamu will not be running?
That is, that is correct. I don't know if Tamu was on the call, but our, in our candidates for at-large this year are Ellen DeTanto, Alyssa Porter, and Christina Cardinelli.
Right, I saw that, and I wanted to make sure. Pardon me?
Looks like Councilmember Tamu Graham-Ryanhardt is on the call. I don't know if she wants to address that.
Hi, Dave. Yeah, just really quickly, I'm a firm believer in grassroots and citizens becoming very active in government. And what I recognize is that there are a lot of things about city government that people don't know, and the more who have an opportunity to kind of see behind the curtain, I think the better it is. And so I feel like I've done, done what I came to do on council and would like to give other people in the city the opportunity to move their agendas forward. We all have different strengths, and I think that the slate of candidates that we have are good ones and would love to be able to offer the opportunity to people who have wanted to, but out of maybe respect for the sitting council members have not, and I felt that it was time for me to hand it over to a candidate who was interested in doing that.
Thank you, Tamu. And I also would like to be filled in on the, I came in just as Marie Caruba was finishing up, so I don't know the candidates for the first three wards.
Sure thing, Dave. So we, we do not have candidates at this time for wards one and two. We do have for Ward Three, Vicki James will be returning.
Okay.
And then Marie Caruba for Ward Four as an incumbent. We have Doug Lawson for Ward Five.
I saw that.
And Tom Nelson as an incumbent for Ward Six.
Right. Okay.
And we'll be sending around bios for each of the candidates right after this virtual press conference.
Okay, really appreciate that, and thank you. That's all I have, and I'm sorry I came in late.
No problem. We're happy to help. Any other media members have some questions for our candidates?
Jason Sample, WRFA, can you hear me?
We can, Jason. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, happy to be here. My question is just generally speaking for either you or perhaps Marie, and that is just the fact that the Democratic Party currently is in the minority. How important is it for the next two years to regain the majority as you work on your final four years of your term?
I'll see if Marie wants to answer that first, and I guess both of us. You're muted, Marie.
My cat and the phone kept going off, so I muted. I have found that working on the council, we really are a collegial body and work together. I think everyone to a person on the council is working for the betterment of the city. I can't say that we've ever had major disputes that we couldn't work out. And, you know, unfortunately, the national government is not working the same way, but I can honestly say that Democrats and Republicans have worked very well together. I serve on the Finance Committee with two Republicans, and a Republican chairs that committee, and we have had no disagreements or issues. And I can honestly say with sincerity that I've enjoyed working with both sides, you know. I've worked with Brent Sheldon on Housing Committee and with, along with Vicki James, who chairs it, and at one time I chaired that committee, and we all seem to be in agreement on what we're looking for, to improve the city and to better the life and opportunities for people who live and work here and who have chosen to live here and educate their children here. So I can't say that, you know, is it better for the incumbent mayor to have a Democratic majority? He might have to answer that, but I can't say that it's ever been a problem since I've been on the council that we seem to be able to work together and, and discuss and come to agreements on how we need to proceed in the betterment of the city.
Thanks, Marie. And we'll add on to that. First and foremost, I would agree with Marie in the fact that we do work pretty well together. And the interesting part about City Council is that you are there to make the city better. And so we try to do whatever we can in order to move the city forward. Now, what I will say to add on that, will having a Democratic majority help in moving the city forward? Absolutely, and here's why. I will agree that the council members that we have on the Republican-led council definitely has a vision for moving the city forward, but I think that we have different timelines. We've seen that there has been progress happening here in the city. It has gone slowly, very slowly, and as mayor, my goal is to make sure that we speed that up, because we cannot wait any longer for progress here in the city of Jamestown. Having a Democratic majority will help us speed that up, continue to expand the vision that I, that we started back when I ran for mayor, which is now actually two years ago. I forgot we had a pandemic in between. But we're super excited because this is an opportunity for us to start to speed up the wheels of government, to move towards seeing a city for the future here in Jamestown, and we're hoping that these candidates here will really get us there and get us to the finish line. Okay, very good. Thanks.
Hi, I'd like to jump in again, Mayor, if I could, real quickly.
Sure thing, Dave.
Anyway, this is completely off the topic of your Zoom meeting, but since you're available, any word on the city's annexation suit?
Not at this time. I believe that it's still going through the court process, and as you know, most of the courts have been, some closed, some open, and everything is taking quite a long time. So there's no new updates that we've heard so far.
And not even a calendar date set?
Not to my knowledge, and unfortunately, as you know, housing courts have been closed. Most courts are moving at a snail's pace, given the pandemic due to loss of staff or working from home. We're still, we're still waiting, and we believe it's going to take quite some time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other media questions? All right. Hearing none, I want to say thank you all for joining us tonight. We were super excited to have you, to be able to announce all of our slate of candidates in the future. We're hoping we can find a time when we can all gather together again and be able to, you know, really have friends, family, everyone support these candidates. I can tell you that just by announcing and getting ready to announce, I've talked to a lot of these candidates, family members who are excited and pumped and ready to work to get them elected to City Council. We're ready to roll, and we're ready to go as one team, Team Jamestown, which is what we're excited to do. It's not about what we're doing, what I'm doing as mayor, it's about how we all together work to move this city forward, and we are excited to get out there, to meet people where they're at, to connect with them in different ways due to the pandemic, and get going so that we can start moving this city forward. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We'll send out a bio for all of the candidates right after this meeting so that you have it, and we encourage you to reach out to the candidates directly, learn more about their platform, and we're excited to have more of these events going forward in the future. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful, wonderful evening.